We'll call the committee of the whole meeting for the city of Elgin for March 23rd, 2022 to order. Will the court please call the roll?
Council members Dixon.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Rocheberger.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Stefan.
Here.
Thorne.
Here.
Mayor Captain.
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of March 9th, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rocheberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain.
Yes. Motion's approved 9-0. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item this evening is a presentation from special events coordinator Kate O'Leary. She's going to be talking about recommendations on funding allocations for the 2022 special events programming this year. Good evening, Ms. O'Leary.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Captain, members of the council, City Manager Kozel and Elgin residents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. The last time I stood before you was in February of 2020 when we had discussed a reduced and refocused plan that would allow staff to evaluate the special event season to determine the future of events for the city. Unfortunately, just weeks later, the COVID-19 pandemic spread across the world and we, along with millions of others, were forced to shut down. Over the last two years, Elgin's Special Events Department has adapted to the state of Illinois and CDC guidelines to continue providing quality events and community engagement while maintaining the safety of our residents. Based on current metrics, city staff have been working to prepare for a 2022 season that will allow residents and visitors to gather and enjoy all that Elgin has to offer. The proposed 2022 special event season will be familiar to you as we recover from a two-year hiatus and begin building back up to where we left off prior to 2020. I do want to highlight that event costs across the board have increased as materials, labor, production, and rentals have all been affected by the pandemic. With the summer season right around the corner, staff is proposing a return to two of our most popular event series, Concerts in the Park and Movies in the Park. The city traditionally hosts 90-minute concerts in Wing Park on Tuesdays in June and July. Each concert in 2021 saw approximately 300 attendees. Verbal feedback to staff at each concert was largely positive with special appreciation paid to the variety of local bands that performed. Staff is proposing a total of five concerts in Wing Park in 2022. Historically, Elgin has hosted Movies in the Park with movies shown on a city-owned inflatable screen at Festival Park on Thursday nights in July and August. Movies have typically started at dusk around 8:30 PM to allow for projector visibility. No additional entertainment or activities were presented during the movies. Community response to this event series was to adjust the start time, provide more engagement before the films began, and change the location to neighborhood parks. With this in mind, staff is proposing several changes to the Movies in the Park series in 2022. Staff intends to shift the Movies in the Park series to Friday evenings and add additional locations. A 23-foot by 13-foot LED screen will be rented on three dates. This rental includes all power, audio, visual, and labor needs to operate the movie showing. This traveling trailer will be able to operate in Festival Park, Copper Springs Park, and Lord's Park, enabling the city to engage with residents both in the downtown area and on the east and west sides of Elgin. Staff will be renting an upgraded projector on two dates. This will allow staff to use the existing inflatable screen but will allow for an earlier start time at Festival Park. We will also be booking themed children's activities such as character meet and greets, face painting, and creative art projects at each event. This will also secure the use of the movie rights. The city supports the Isaac Walton League in its annual Fish for Fun event, which takes place the first week of June. This event is for children to compete in a free fishing tournament and learn about the environment. This year, the Isaac Walton League, the city of Elgin, and the Forest Preserves of Cook County will be joined by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources in hosting this event. Approximately 100 attendees have participated in the event in the past, but with this expanded partnership, staff is expecting 300 participants in 2022. City staff is excited to propose a full day of entertainment for the Fourth of July, beginning with Elgin's traditional parade beginning at 9:00 AM on July 4th. This year's parade theme will be in conjunction with the Galeboard and Library's Summer Exhibit and will be announced soon. Elgin will also host a Fourth of July concert and fireworks display. Staff is expecting to provide the community with a fireworks display comparable to the 2021 show at which 5,000 people were in attendance. With the addition of a concert, staff is anticipating attendance to double and are expecting 10,000 people in the downtown Elgin area. Staff has also been reaching out to food trucks to gauge interest on participating in the event, with approximately 20 trucks responding positively to attending Elgin's event so far. The city of Elgin continues to support outside organizations in their event planning. Memorial Day, the September 11th ceremony, and Veterans Day are three such events and will see similar programming to that of 2019. For this year, the city will sponsor two events that were previously produced by the city of Elgin. The Elgin Foxtrot, which was executed in 2021 by the Elgin Lions Club and the Kenyon Farm Runners, is returning in 2022. Art and Soul on the Fox was eliminated as a city event in 2020 but has been revived by Art for All and will be returning this August to the newly renovated Civic Plaza. Staff is proposing in-kind services to each event to assist the groups with conducting these events. The holiday season in Elgin sees multiple of separate events that staff is recommending return in 2022. The tree lighting ceremony traditionally sees about 250 people gather to light up the Elgin tree. Additionally, Santa's Letters is a three-week engagement where children are able to write to Santa and receive a letter in response. In 2021, the city partnered with the Downtown Neighborhood Association to facilitate a new event, Holiday Cheers, which took place on Small Business Saturday. This event featured more than 20 downtown businesses participating in a shop and sip cocoa crawl and saw a sold-out event with 400 tickets sold. Community response was positive, prompting staff to suggest bringing Holiday Cheers back for a second year. Staff will evaluate this event by coordinating with the DNA to get feedback from the downtown area. The city will continue partnering with the DNA for this event for business outreach and day of operation. So this brings me to our largest discussion item tonight, which is the question surrounding Nightmare on Chicago Street. After a two-year hiatus, staff started exploring the possibility of bringing back this fan favorite and have come up with a proposal for your consideration. Nightmare on Chicago Street was last held in 2019. Special event staff intended to return to Nightmare on Chicago Street in 2021, but a shortened planning period, rising costs, and continued uncertainty around the still prevalent pandemic required staff to pause Nightmare on Chicago Street for a second consecutive year. 2022 is bringing hope for a return to normalcy in terms of gathering and things to do, yet there are still several obstacles in terms of planning events that need to be considered. Impacts of the pandemic are still present, including rising material and labor costs, supply chain issues, staffing difficulties, and limited rental availability. The total estimated cost to host Nightmare on Chicago Street is $512,000. This is a 51% increase from 2019 when event costs totaled $339,000 due to the aforementioned rising costs of event rentals, labor, and production. In previous years, the city was able to rely on volunteers to successfully organize this event. Staff discussions and research to date indicates a shortage of volunteers needed to effectively conduct Nightmare on Chicago Street. Part of the concern here is that because we have lost the momentum of the event after a two-year hiatus, our volunteer base is severely diminished. We're effectively starting from scratch in terms of building this event but with the expectation of production levels after nine years of event growth. As mentioned, $512,000 is the estimated cost of Nightmare on Chicago Street. More than 400 people are involved in creating and executing this event. In order to guarantee sufficient staffing for the event, the city will need a budget for additional labor to offset the loss of volunteers as well as increase the current budget for city labor. City labor is estimated to be $150,000. $73,000 is budgeted for entertainment, which would include an opening act and a headliner performance at two stages, a trio of DJs at a third stage, the entertainment for B-Movie Boulevard and the Thunderdome, which are two staples of Nightmare on Chicago Street, all-street theater performances, and an appearance by Svengooli, another staple of this event. $22,000 will be dedicated to advertising and marketing to promote the event, and staff will be using multiple platforms to do this. $110,000 is budgeted for professional services, decor, and building supplies with the acknowledgement that building supplies cost, on average, 20% more due to the pandemic. This would include costs for labor needed to design, build, paint, and set up props that was previously done on a volunteer basis as well as the material costs themselves. The budget for production needs such as stage, sound, and lighting equipment, generators, tents, fencing, and other integral rentals is recommended to increase from $97,000 to $130,000 to account for the increased industry costs. The remaining $27,000 is budgeted for miscellaneous expenses, including signage and banners, merchandise, transportation, and other supplies. Staff has issued requests for proposals for beer sales and gate-ticket operations to review the current costs of these vendors. Requests for proposals close on March 25th. In the event that the city does not receive qualified beer vending proposals before the bid closure this Friday, there are funds set aside to contract a professional company to provide this service. This would include securing products, staffing, supplies, and power needs. Staff has been exploring the feasibility of Nightmare on Chicago Street given the evolving pandemic and the availability of resources needed to successfully run the event. Staff will also need to consider the impact on downtown Elgin businesses and ensure they have the ability to support a return to Nightmare on Chicago Street. Many suffering businesses were forced to close over the last two years due to the pandemic, and many businesses that remain are still recovering today. Supply chains across the globe have been disrupted, resulting in product scarcity and product cost increases. Labor shortages have also severely affected the operations of businesses throughout the nation. In particular, the food service industry has been devastated, resulting in restaurants and bars being forced to shorten hours, reduce capacity, or shutter completely. Staff has reached out to the downtown businesses to address any concerns with hosting an event of this magnitude and would take their input into consideration if this event moves forward. As of this afternoon, we have 25 responses. Nine businesses would plan to be open for the event, 10 businesses would plan to be closed, and six businesses are currently unsure of their status at this time. Given this challenges and the risks facing this event season and in regard to an event of this size in both planning and costs, staff has prepared this proposal for council's consideration. With the recognition that we won't be receiving requests for proposals for beer sales and gate and ticket operations until March 25th, staff will wait to gather all responses and bring back definitive information during the April 13th council meeting. Since 2019, staff has been considering the importance of a market study where an outside firm would conduct research to assist the city in the direction of future events. Staff is recommending hiring a firm to compile comprehensive data on the direction of special events and cultural arts in the city. This program will study previous Elgin event seasons along with Hemmings programming, Elgin art showcase productions, and other arts endeavors. It will also source feedback from our residents, conduct market research on neighboring events, and create multiple surveys and focus groups to draw data from. As we emerge from a devastating two-year disruption to our arts plan, this market study is the perfect opportunity to take a breath and reevaluate what kind of direction Elgin should embark on regarding events and programming. Staff will review proposals from interested parties and intends to select a firm to best guide the special and cultural events plans for 2023 and beyond. Thank you very much for your time.
Any questions for Ms. O'Leary? Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kate, for the overview. And I seen you up there again and talking about these events that we're going to have coming up this year. Really excited to try to get back to it. I keep my fingers crossed hoping that we can get back to a sense of normalcy when it comes to the events and being able to gather. So I hope and pray that everything continues to go well. Couple of questions. Well, first, let me just say, the individual events, most of them, you know, look great. I'm really looking forward to having those come back. The music in the park and the movies in the park, I'm sorry, and then a lot of the band events. That's going to be great with the live music. Nightmare on Chicago Street, a 51% increase.
Yes.
In cost, and you detailed exactly why that is. As far as the revenue is concerned, that we have traditionally received from the event, it's not a money-making event, so that's not where I'm going with this. But with there being a 51% increase in cost, that's even more of a potential loss? So do we have any kinds of expectations as far as what that loss is going to could potentially look like in comparison to what this event looked like in the past?
Yeah, it is safe to say that it's not a money-making event. The Nightmare on Chicago Street Committee and city staff have looked at increasing ticket costs, which is in the plan. It's just that we don't want to price ourselves out and make it an inaccessible event to residents. So looking at about a 5% increase, that would take the tickets from $20 in early sales to $25 at the gate. We'd start at $25 in early sales and then move it up to $30 at the gate. That was kind of the, you know, if we increased it by 30 or 40 or 50% to help us offset, I just, I feel that a lot of the normal event goers would be priced out and wouldn't be able to attend.
Okay, and in... Does this event, does it make it more money than we spend, right? But what is the amount that we traditionally get back, if you know that offhand?
Let's see, if I can remember from 2019, the total event cost was about $339,000. I'd have to get the exact number back to you. We made about 2/3 of that back.
2/3 of that back.
Yeah, but I would have to, like I said, I'd have to get the hard numbers back to you.
Right, so when it comes to hiring a consultant to come in and look at city events and to kind of assess the landscape of it all. Nightmare of Chicago Street, is that going to be one of the events?
Yes.
That they do a deep dive into?
Yeah, we would take the event from its origin, where it kind of grew from the 3,000 people that we saw at the first year all the way up to the 18,000 people that we saw at its max, see where the interest lied, what grew, and how we can... If the direction is to move forward with Nightmare on Chicago Street, take the elements that really work, that people kind of gravitate towards, and move forward with it, it would definitely be part of the market study to strongly consider Nightmare on Chicago Street, being that it's our largest event.
Yeah, okay. All right, yeah, I look forward to hearing what that consultant has to say about these events. You know, everything looks good. Honestly, I'm a little skeptical about potentially a $200,000 difference, just to put it nicely. So hopefully, we can do our best to get as much of this money back as possible. So I'm for having the event, but, you know, $512,000, a 51% increase, that's a hard pill to swallow. So I wonder what things we can shift around, move around, to make that money a lot more functional for us? And so I look forward to seeing what the consultant and the staff continues to develop. So thank you, and I'll leave the rest of the questions to my colleagues.
Mr. Thorne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kate. And I know I speak for all of the council. Congratulations, since we've seen you, on being a new mother.
Thank you.
I appreciate your hard work on this, your due diligence, and of course, how well you run these events and what you do for the city. And I respect my colleague, Councilman Dixon's questioning about costs, fees, and return. But there's a huge hidden return that is not measurable. I know for a fact that, for instance, the store on Chicago Street, the big antique store, I was so shocked when I said, "Are you going to be closed at Nightmare?" This was a couple of years ago. She says, "Heavens know, it's the most profitable day of the year for us. We sell so much more, it's unbelievable." People buy things and even leave it and then come back and get it the next day. And then sometimes they shop extra. The Owls Club, a private club on Chicago Street. It's the one day a year they open to the public and they do 10 times more business that day than any other day of the year. Those are just two examples of business that comes in, the city benefits, the businesses benefit. So there are ways that are not measured that benefit this town. People that come in, I can't help but believe that there's people that come in with, when you've got 14,000 to 18,000 people that are staying in hotels and they're spending money all over besides just at some of the vendors. Some of the vendors are the stores downtown as well. So that is something to at least think about. So I appreciate that. I look forward to the study as well, though, and I'm sure for it. I know the MC doesn't charge.
He does not.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kate, for that. I also would like to add on to that, that the success to Nightmare on Chicago Street is also because it's a known fact that it's a safe place to come. And I think that's very important, especially with the climate right now. When people know that if you come to this event, I'm not saying it's perfect, but I mean, we've never heard of anybody getting hurt and I don't, you know, I don't foresee that. But I think it's because that's the way we've done it in Elgin. And I think after doing it so many years, it just gets better and better. But more than anything, it's, I think, putting our name out there, you know, that this is something that the city of Elgin does. And I think other places have tried to do the same, but very small. You can't compare. So I think that was a concern, but I totally understand. If we're going to do something, we should do it well, you know? So I understand that, and I look forward to the things we have to do. One more thing that we have to look at. The city's not really into making a lot of business, to think of safety and to get people to do things. It's our parks, you know? We don't charge for people to go to parks. But yet, they're there and people do use them, and that's a purpose of what a municipality does, so thank you.
Ms. Powell.
Thank you, Mayor Captain. Thank you, Kate. Welcome back.
Thank you.
As my colleague mentioned, congratulations. It's no secret to anyone who's known me for the past 12 years up here that this is one of my favorite events. I come every year. It is the best people watching in town. And I see several members of our staff and volunteers in the audience that really help make Nightmare on Chicago Street, and all of our special events, for that matter, very special. I think it's one of the things that makes Elgin a unique destination, not just for folks that don't live here but for our own residents. And it's one of the things that I have missed terribly during these past two years during the pandemic. So I'm excited to see us rolling so many of our signature events back out for the public. In terms of Nightmare on Chicago Street and the increased cost, definitely a concern. I know that everything has gone up. I think our inflationary rate right now is CPI is probably close to 7% in this area. We've seen that in, you know, probably even more so when we talk about building costs. And I know you guys build a whole lot of the sets and things of that sort. But you spoke specifically about the need to actually pay labor versus volunteers. How have you vetted that for this year? Do you know for sure that you're not going to have those volunteers? Have you reached out to folks that have participated in the past and they've said no? Where does that stand?
Sure, and we will continue to reach out and try and find as many volunteers as we have had in the past. We'll go back to the organizations that we've used that have been a big help. The trend that we've been seeing over the last two years with the events that we have managed to do, like Little Park of Horrors, recently the Daddy Daughter Dance, just kind of across the board, volunteers have been affected by the pandemic in a very strong way. They don't really have the time that is needed to dedicate to events, especially one that's of this size where it's not... I mean, day of events are very important to get everything up, for sure. But we have a lot of volunteers that are putting time in now, all the way through October, that just don't have the ability to do that right now while they're trying to kind of recover from the pandemic. So the trend that we're seeing is that there's just a scarcity across almost every industry in volunteers that are... With every good intention, they love the event, they want to come back and help, and they want to put all the time that they possibly can into it, which we appreciate. It's just at the 11th hour when things kind of are... We're depending on these people to put on an event of this quality. Things come up, plans change, and they're not able to commit the time to it. And so in order to avoid that, what could be a lot costlier in the long run when we have to, at that last minute, get all those positions filled and fill those gaps up, planning for it ahead of time just to make sure that we have those core areas taken care of, that we're not going to be dependent on volunteers that may or may not show up.
Can you go back to that slide where you kind of talked about that and what that cost looks like compared to what it has been in the past?
Is this the slide?
I believe it was. So the city staff labor figure that's shown there, the $150,000, how does that compare to what we've spent in previous years for labor?
In 2019, I can attest to that one. That one was one that I planned after Varp's stellar run. Labor was at about $130,000 for the city of Elgin alone. So that extra $20,000 would be that we would need a few extra bodies from each department that we have and then also some part-time staff that I would need to source probably from the center. I've been speaking with Rachel Jakowski and Steve Gard on their... He runs the aquatics program. He's got lifeguards that would be willing to help us out. And Rachel's got a lot of the youth programming. She's got youth coordinators that would be able to come in and help us run the merchandise booths and donate a few hours that week just for the last-minute prep so that the committee can dedicate their time to taking care of their areas and just have a few extra bodies on hand to run the event.
So you anticipate most of that will be, as it's written, it's basically city staff from other departments that would be brought in?
Yes.
Probably on overtime to assist with the event the day of?
Yeah, I mean, we already take labor from so many different departments. All Public Works is touched. We've got the Hemmings crew out there all day. We do have center labor that comes out. So we would need to take a look at not just traffic but more of the sewer department coming out, water department, anybody that is kind of all hands on deck that day that gets the event up and running.
Gotcha. The other questions I had were pertaining to some of the other special events that you mentioned outside of Nightmare on Chicago Street. Glad to see the Movie in the Park, Movies in the Park coming back and kind of how you're tweaking that. Has any decision been made on where those movies will be held yet this year?
Well, we've looked, I looked with Greg Holkey at the East Side Park locations, and Lord's Park is pretty clearly at the best location in terms of capacity, where we can host the most people, the way that the trailer needs to maneuver into that park. It's got reasonable parking in the park itself and the surrounding neighborhood that wouldn't be too much of an impact. So the East Side Park, we're open to suggestions, but Lord's Park is kind of the best fit on the east side. West Side, we were trying to take something to the far west side just because since we eliminated Hay Day in 2020, there's not a lot of far west side activities. And the feedback that we got last year, we did do a single movie out there that the neighborhood was very positive for, so this is a good place to start. Doing a far west side park in one that's got plenty of parking. The Copper Springs Park has got the barn location, which is where most of our Nightmare on Chicago Street build takes place. And so staff is familiar with the park. We've got some resources in the barn that we can use at that location. And we had done it last year, that it worked pretty well there. So we're looking to do Copper Springs again this year, but again, we're open to suggestions for the far west side.
So just two outside of the downtown?
Yes, yeah, two this year. The market study is going to include looking at the attendance in 2022 to see if, you know, if this is an event that a lot of families want to come out to, especially with the added entertainment that we're looking to provide, food trucks and the face painting. If that direction comes back to us, that this is a direction we would want to go, we would maybe look at expanding the series completely, maybe showing double the movies in multiple different parks instead of three in downtown Elgin, maybe just one. That's something that we would explore with the market study.
And can you speak to some of the other events that you mentioned? I know there are different categories. Do we have the city-sponsored events, the city-supported events? And what was the third one? Or was it just two?
We've got community events that are the...
The community events.
Yeah, the private or public property event permitting.
What else are you seeing? I know that we're currently working with you on bringing back the Juneteenth festival this year that as a supported event through the Cultural Arts Commission. What other supported events are you or other events that you're seeing, like Rib Fest? Is any of that stuff seeming to come back?
So I have not been contacted by the organizers for events, previous events, yet. It's a little early. Usually I start to get those kind of closer to June where they... Well, Rib Fest, by now, I would normally have heard from. But as the summer gets going, those contacts are generally reaching out to, well, to me, to find out if they... if the park is available. I have not seen any of those come through yet, but I, I think they're kind of in the same boat that we are, where it's just kind of a later start while they're trying to figure out where they're gonna source their resources from, if it's gonna be cost prohibitive for them to do. Um, but I would expect those, if they are coming through, they'll be coming through now in April to get started for the summer season.
Great. And my last question relates to the study that's being done. Um, when do you anticipate that that would be completed? And I'm assuming that they will be looking at not just the viability of our current events, but making recommendations on where the gaps are in terms of possibly new events that we should be looking at, tourism value, uh, things of that sort?
Sure, yes. Myself, Butch Wilhoney with the Hemmans and Amanda Harris, who's currently on maternity leave, um, are all kind of, uh, finalizing our areas so that we can kind of go together as a cohesive arts, arts plan and present that in a bid proposal to go to a firm to cover not just special events, but programming in all facets. Um, I am hoping that that is ready to go to the public, um, mid-April, um, so that we can get things started for our summer season and that we're not missing any events, uh, that they can kind of evaluate and, and start taking a look at, especially as, um, you know, the weather gets nice and things just kind of get off to their races. And I, I want to get that off as soon as possible.
So they will be looking at all of our facilities, like the Hemmans and art showcase?
Yes.
Things like that?
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Further questions? Mr. Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Kate, for the presentation and for the production crew showing up. Um, I guess, you know, before I get into my insights, because I live on Chicago Street, I worked at Public House for multiple years while this event was going on. Um, I just want to frame this as, i- if all things were equal and, and the cost stayed at $340,000, um, we already explained that we had losses. We know that this is an event that we're not trying to break even. We'll accept some losses. But if all things are equal, we would lose more this year, um, just for the fact that attendance will be down. Um, that's just what it's gonna be, because we're still coming out of this pandemic. So, uh, I just want to set the stage that this will be, uh, bigger losses than we'd ever have if we were to move forward with this. Um, and something I, I want to e- express to people is, um, you know, much like our, our sewer system can handle maybe 10 inches of rain over the course of a month, um, but if that happens in an hour, it gets overloaded. Um, same thing is true for restaurants. So, as you had highlighted, um, these restaurants were building up with the success of Nightmare over the years. And so, you know, speaking of Public House, where we were the ones that were organizing, coordinating, training the 100-plus group of volunteers, um, that's evaporated to some extent. Um, the staffing that was experienced in this event has largely evaporated and not just in one organization, throughout the entire downtown. So, um, I know even when Nightmare was at a normal rate, you had operations that were bowing out because their normal operation didn't have the staffing, uh, required to handle that event. And so they just bow out because it was just too much. So, um, I just want to make that clear to everyone. It might be big for money. Um, it might be your biggest day of the year. Uh, but it also might be a day that you lose half your staff because they quit, because it's frustrating you didn't have the, the support systems in place. So, um, those are some of my insights as coming from the food service industry. Um, but I'm also curious, as we absorb all this in terms of the increased expenses, not only to host, host the event, but it'll be increased expenses for anybody who's gonna be shopping that day, um, at a restaurant. You know, food expenses have gone up. Um, everything's gonna be more expensive. We know the, the quality of the event will probably not be to the top level. And I don't want to assume that. That's why I'm curious if there's been feedback from the production crew. Um, is this crazy to even be considering this late in the game? Um, I don't want to make assumptions. I've never been part of that operation.
Yeah, I mean, we are, we're a little behind where we would like to be, um, staging in, in the, the technical rentals that we need to get are moving fast, so we'll have to, to snag those while we can. Um, in terms of build, the crew that we have that has been with Nightmare since its beginning is the most dedicated and passionate crew that I know. They will, they will work tirelessly to put on an event that is the quality that everyone has come to expect on Nightmare on Chicago Street. I have no doubt that they will put every ounce of their passion back into the project. Um, the, the help that will be is the budgeted, uh, labor that we can help them with, where we won't have the six or seven volunteers that are out there until three or four in the morning every night, trying to get things ready to go. Um, we'll hopefully have some extra hands able to spread that workload out and, and assist them.
Okay. Um, yeah, it's, I guess, I, I'm up in the air on this. You know, I, I obviously enjoy the event, especially now that I don't work in food service and I still live on Chicago Street. I get to enjoy the event. Um, but I also am a stickler for doing things properly. Um, and so, you know, again, to refer back to restaurants, you all in the audience have been to a place before, bad experience. You probably were like, I'm not going back. Um, that's my concern here is I don't want to rush this because we want to, you know, hang up a win, um, and have it be a situation where we invite a lot of people down, production crew puts in insane hours in effort to do this, and the rest of the experience isn't up to people's standards. And, and downtown Elgin is already hard to attract people to. So that's my concern. I just wanted to say everything that I said to portray that, um, perspective. And it, it, yeah, I mean, I appreciate the production crew stepping up, saying that they had even entertained doing it this year at this time. So, um, thank you for the presentation and, oh, and for the other events. Uh, I will plug block parties. Um, we did budget for a block party in a box kit. So, um, block party season is coming up. It's a much smaller event. It'll be on your street. But, um, for residents who, you know, want to get outside and meet their neighbors, um, I encourage you to reach out and, uh, reserve the block party in a box.
That's good.
Anything else for Kate? So, Leary. Uh, anybody else? Mr. Stefan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Kate, thank you and, and congratulations, too. Um, good for you. Um, I had most of my questions answered, but I, I just wanted to kind of try to frame this a little bit. So, from your comments, it sounds like there's no decision to be made until early April, probably the first meeting next month.
Yeah, until we get, uh, those last pieces of information compiled, um, I would recommend holding off making that decision until mid-April. Um, just then we'll have a, a very clear picture of, uh, the proposals that have come in. And if they're, the vending services by those providers have gone up significantly in the last couple of years, um, until we get those proposals back, we just won't know those costs.
But, and I appreciate that. And, and I intend to take advantage of that because I see Fred out here and, um, certainly will pick his brain as a, somebody who is key to this event and Jennifer and downtown businesses and, um, others that help coordinate that event. So, um, I will be looking forward to talking to them and getting more information as we make this decision.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, real quick, um, I just want to be totally clear. I want this event to happen, okay? I'm concerned about the costs, but, you know, over the next couple of years, few years, we may get back to where we were before, be in an even better situation after the consulting and so on and so forth.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, to my point that, um, Councilman Thorn made, which was a valid point, which is there are other economic, uh, factors to consider. Uh, it made me think about a, um, separate, the overall economic impact. Um, and if we are, if we could, for this type of event, which is large crowds, if we can possibly gauge that, the economic impact for something like that, do you think that that is feasible? Um, is that something that, and I think, um, Councilwoman Powell kind of touched on that with the, uh, with people who don't live in the city, uh, coming here, so, and what that impact will be. But just the overall economic impact, hotels, um, stores, restaurants, so on and so forth.
It, it'll be hard to gauge that accurately. It is a very high-risk event just because a lot of our ticket sales, we don't, we, we get ticket sales in advance, but people tend to wait until the week of or the day of to see what the weather's gonna do. Um, it being an outdoor event, a lot of people, like in 2017, when it was 75 degrees and sunny all night, it got, it was great weather. We saw 18,000 people. That next year, we saw a snowstorm and that number plummeted, um, just because we didn't see the tickets coming in at that, at that time. So we can't really predict if people are gonna be booking travel for this, or if they're gonna be coming in from downtown or from neighboring cities, um, just because, you know, we, if the pandemic has another dip and we have to kind of adjust on that, that might factor in. Um, the weather's gonna factor in. So there are things that are out of our control that we cannot predict and we won't be able to get a real accurate number. We can do our best, um, based on, you know, the way things are trending. Um, and we can look at what has been successful in previous years. Uh, it's just a lot is dependent on the kind of the last week of that event of, of where our volunteers have landed and what the weather's gonna be.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I, I appreciate that. And the, uh, the Elgin Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, they do a really good job of trying their best to track it. And that's what, you know, really, uh, got me to thinking about it. And so maybe we're not perfect in the tracking. Uh, but, um, but tracking it to some degree makes having, having a loss a little bit more palatable.
Yeah.
Right? So, uh, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Shaw?
Yeah, uh, the only thing, I think, uh, the comments were covered pretty, pretty, uh, thoroughly on the Nightmare on Chicago Street. I guess I was gonna go back to the, the, uh, movies in the park?
Yes.
Uh, just my two cents, I, I like the nostalgicness of having them start when it's dark. It's just something about the event that I like, that, uh, you know, it's fun. So I noticed that the price goes up quite a bit when we start to get some of those specialized screens and projectors that, um, I'm on the fence for. I guess if we want to try it for one year and see how it goes with the different, you know, we can then start to see the response to it. But, uh, uh, it is quite pricey changing that around. It's, uh, for the number of people we expect to come for the cost, it's, it's not, it's much more than going to the movies yourself.
Yes, it is.
Uh, just a comment from me. I am a little concerned about the survey that was done. Uh, this, uh, the benefit of this was supposed to be for downtown businesses. And, oh, half the businesses are not going to participate, according to the survey. And we're missing six that have not decided. To me, at this point, it's like anything else. If you haven't decided, if you're gonna do it, you're probably not gonna do it. So, we're doing something here, and I don't want to force feed it to half the businesses downtown, that we're gonna do this whether you want it or not. And how much money are we gonna make? I don't know if that's, uh, important. And one of the things I look at, uh, cost for all our events is $573,000. This is over 50% of that. Uh, is there money that can be better spent? Cost with labor takes this up over $800,000. And, uh, reimbursement, we can look back and try to guess if people are gonna stay here or not. That's always a continuing, uh, discussion of things that are gonna spend the nights. I'm sure some do. Uh, how many people, uh, benefit from this? The city of Elgin people, do they go to this? It's been here for eight or nine years. Are they going or are these people from out of town? So where's the benefit go? How much do we get back for putting this event on? And I'm, again, I'm concerned. Uh, maybe Ms. Pocalla's here, and maybe she can answer my question. There are 20, 25 people were surveyed. Are they ones that are just along Chicago Street and would be directly impacted by this? Or are they the, all the downtown businesses?
Um, the survey was... Good evening. Thank you for the question. Um, the survey was shared with our entire email list, um, in our weekly Business Buzz newsletter. So it was an optional survey that people could take. Um, we did hold a meeting, um, that we did have some businesses attend. Um, so, uh, you know, in addition to that, we've just had anecdotal feedback. But we can continue to share the survey for additional responses. Um, but that, that's how the feedback was, was solicited.
Okay. And I go to Mr. Good's concerns, that, uh, I, I meet with businesses. I just met with President's Counsel through the chamber, and nobody is able to staff their business. So I, I looked at the downtown, how are they gonna be able to staff this? If we bring people into town and they have to wait in line for an hour and a half to get a beer, they are not gonna be happy. Or if they can't get seated or get a meal done and they have to sit waiting to get into the restaurant for 45 minutes or an hour, they're not gonna be happy. So if we want to have this be a happy event for people, we have to make sure that it's gonna be successful. And I think that's the, I think that's the challenge here. And it's getting a little, I, I agree, it's getting a little late in the game to do this. And typically, I think we used to start talking about this in January or February. I see Fred Wims out there, and I think he probably would rather have had some time to start working on this and, uh, begin to work on this now. But it pushes a lot of pressure on people. And I'm a little concerned when we have, uh, uh, some people that are volunteers and some people are gonna be paid. Now, when you work side by side, people are gonna start saying, well, wait a minute. How come I'm doing this for nothing? And somebody else here is gonna be paid, uh, to be part of this. How do we, how are you, as the person that's gonna organize this, gonna resolve that? Are we gonna pay everybody? Instead, everybody's gonna be paid here? Or are we gonna just have a few people volunteer and say, hey, if we get 20, you guys will do it work for nothing? And the rest of these people are all gonna be paid? How's that gonna work out?
It's gonna pose a challenge. Um, we'll have to identify the, the positions that we absolutely cannot be without and see what the breakdown would be for, I don't know if it'd be an hourly payment or if just a stipend for these people. Um, we do have some groups that we will seek, seek out that have been participating in the past. Um, I don't want to put anybody on the spot just because I haven't reached out to them yet. But there are a few core groups that, um, either have school programs that require volunteer hours, that they would have, be happy to, to put a few hours in for. Um, or they just genuinely are, are, you know, friends and family of the event that love it very much and wanna, wanna swing by. But it does pose a, a problem of who, who is gonna be paid versus who isn't. That's something we would have to look at.
Ms. Powell?
Just a quick follow-up to that question. If I recall, um, and I don't know if it was associated with Nightmare on Chicago Street event or another special event, uh, in the past, but to the mayor's point, I believe we had worked out some type of, uh, for lack of a better word, stipend or some type of arrangement with several area non-for-profit groups where they did get money in return for providing a certain number of volunteers. Was that Nightmare on Chicago Street?
I would have to look. I don't...
I think the carnival's did some of that.
It was the...
Foxtrot? I think it was the Foxtrot. Possibly the Foxtrot.
Foxtrot.
Okay.
Elgin Historical Society in the past has provided, um, volunteers in return for a stipend for staffing Nightmare on Chicago Street.
And there, it was beyond that, though, too. I think it might have been...
Well, that, that's the one, is it relates to Nightmare on Chicago Street. I have immediate recollection of the Elgin Historical Society providing army of volunteers in return for, in return for, yes, stipend with the city.
Okay. But then with some of our other events, as I think someone said, like the carnival or somewhat. So there, there is a, there's a playbook that could be used potentially to, in, in, and sent volunteers, uh, from different, that are associated with, uh, different nonprofit groups to volunteer because it benefits the, the nonprofit agency. Just based on what we've done in the past, uh, as City Manager Kozel mentioned, what we've done with Nightmare, but I know I, we've also done it with some other events as well. I, I just wanted to, to, to mention that, uh, the mayor's comments.
But that does come at a cost, though. So again, if it's not just pure volunteers, there's, there's an additional cash outlay in return for getting that dedicated support.
Correct. Correct.
Anything else? Okay, thanks, Kate. Go relax.
Thank you.
Item B is the memorandum outlining the incredible presentation provided by Ms. O'Leary. And, um, just, when it comes to volunteers, too, need to convey appreciation to Ms. O'Leary and her extended family for the volunteer work that they provided on Little Park of Horrors over the past two, for the past two seasons as well. And so, um, anyway. So item B is just documenting what we heard from Ms. O'Leary as part of her presentation. The next item, then, is item C. And this is the second amendment to the agreement with the Gifford Park Association to use, uh, city property at 111 North Channing Street for a community garden. A license agreement with GPA allows the city-owned property at this location to be used for community gardening and education. The garden, named the East Side Neighborhood Garden, currently has 39 raised bed gardens in addition to other garden-related structures such as a hose corral, watering station, and pergola. The GPA Garden Committee is proposing to the addition of three more raised beds and two benches for the 2022 gardening season. Staff is recommending approval of an amendment to the license agreement to add these amenities.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing, and this has been a good project. It's been very successful and, uh, brought some community there. And I think it, uh, made some, uh, helped people make some friends. So very much in favor of it. Clerk, please call the roll.
Oh, Mayor.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Powell.
But one, one quick question. We, we skipped B. I know you mentioned it. Were you looking for a vote or just looking for direction?
No, this, this was just, it's provide direction was the recommendation, and we got that as part of the, of the discussion with Ms. O'Leary. Thank you, Councilmember.
Got it.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Item D is the acceptance of public improvements and easements at 1212 Larkin Avenue, commonly known as the Larkin Home. This development was constructed to add additional, um, dwelling units on the parcel. Um, water main and sanitary sewers throughout the property were included. And the proposed easements that are a part of this approval allow the city to enter onto private property to operate, maintain, and repair the infrastructure. Um, additionally, underground detention basin was constructed to accommodate for the increase in purviewed area, warranting a stormwater management easement that's also considered as part of this approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Mr. Stefan?
Raises a question that kind of ties in with the last item, too. Um, in the middle of the parking lot is the underground easement with a, kind of a grass field surrounded by
parking in this site. And I'm just curious if that could be a garden site. And thinking of that made me think of the fact that we used to have a kind of garden coordinator for the city, and that went away. I'm just wondering if there's an update from, you know, where we are with our gardens, community gardens throughout the city, get an update on that, and look for sites. I know I've worked with Aaron at 311 at looking for sites for possible community gardens to expand that effort. So, just throwing that comment out there.
Anything else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Item E is a resolution committing local funding for proposed federal surface transportation program funding. The Kain Kendall Council of Mayors, commonly referred to as KCOM, opens up a call for projects about every three years. This call serves as an invitation for municipalities in the area to apply for federal funding. The 2022 KCOM call for projects will be ranking projects to receive federal surface transportation program funds, commonly referred to as STP funds, and these are used by municipalities to design and construct transportation improvement projects. To participate in the KCOM call for projects using STP funds, the city must first commit local funds to pay for portions of the projects for which it is making applications. This resolution identifies the city's plan for committing local funds towards the Phase 1 and 2 engineering portions of construction costs for transportation improvement projects being applied as part of the 2022 call for projects. City engineer Mike Poobens has identified four projects for which the city is submitting applications. One is resurfacing on Lilian, on the Lilian, South, and Walnut Avenue resurfacing, essentially going from National all the way to McLean. A proposal for Highland Avenue and Lyle Avenue roundabout, National Street concrete construction, and a Dundee Avenue, Center Street, Villa Street corridor improvements. The plan is, in the event that any or all of these projects are awarded STP funding by KCOM, the city will then be obligated to commit to the Phase 1 and Phase 2 engineering associated with these projects. KCOM essentially pays, provides funding for half the cost of each one of these initiatives.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Mr. Thorne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess when it comes to roundabouts, I have a feeling that I'm not alone in the fact that the two that Elgin has are, many people are not in favor of them. Division Street and...
Gifford.
Excuse me, Gifford.
And Division, yeah.
And also in College Green. And, but I think the reason is that they're just placed in an area that's too small to have them adequate. You see the bigger ones, like out on Route 47 in Plato Center, and it works well. I think Highland Avenue would have a lot more space to have one a little bit larger. I think it would help traffic, and it would look nice. So I think those are things when people think, well, we don't want another one because of what we've had. I'm hoping that this resurfacing and this program, when they talk about roundabouts, I know they were talking about, talking to the neighbors about those two existing roundabouts. And frankly, I would be in favor of the two existing ones going away, but I would be in favor of this new one.
So as you may recall, council member, we are going to be examining as part of the street resurfacing work in both of those neighborhoods, seeing if they're, and working with the neighborhoods to make potential modifications to those existing roundabouts, which I think Mr. Poobens would agree with you, have been shoehorned in areas that don't quite work. As you identified, there's the belief that there is sufficient footage at the Highland Avenue and Lyle Avenue intersection to create a roundabout that doesn't present the same difficulties of the smaller ones we have at those locations. Once again, though, before any of this occurs, the staff would be coming back to the city council for final approval. So appreciate your observations.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Stefan?
I just wanted to follow up with Steve's comments, and he left out some other roundabouts that actually do work really well, and those are Long Conum Parkway, where there's a series of three larger roundabouts that tend to work very well. So I think there is some options for those. That's all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
I think I heard Councilmember Rauschenberger.
Councilmember Rauschenberger.
Oh, that's okay. I was just going to mention, in support of roundabouts, as good for saving gas, they are safer than four-way stops, and they keep traffic moving, you know. So I'm glad that we're considering putting sufficient-sized ones in the right places.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Item F is Navaline migration to the Central Square cloud-hosted environment. Navaline, for 30 years, has been used as the city's financial enterprise resource planning system running accounting, budgeting, utility building, billing, excuse me, cash receipts, account-receivable purchasing, accounts payable, payroll permitting, and inspections, all on the back of a system that was created as a DOS-based application. It is used by every department in the city, and it's attributed to the system's effectiveness and support that has provided the city with so many years of successful service. The system is currently running in the basement of City Hall with an IBM iSeries server. The current production server is five years old and in need of an operating system upgrade to maintain support requirements. The Power 8 model is end-of-life and requires replacement within the next few years, and the backup server at the city's disaster recovery site has inadequate disk space and memory to run the current Navaline system and can't function as intended, is what we call a hot spare in the event of a primary server failure. For these reasons, the city is recommending migrating the Navaline system from an on-premises server to hosting in the Central Square cloud environment as the most efficient means of managing the city's Navaline system. More importantly, this IBM iSeries server, the person in the city who is best qualified to maintain this is ITS Director Jeff Massey, and unfortunately, he's planning to go into retirement in September. So this is more of a matter than just getting another IBM iSeries server. It would require the additional hiring of staff to be able to provide that maintenance, and our analysis is that a cloud-based solution is the most economic and efficient means for providing the services we need.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Powell?
This question is for City Manager Colesel. Can you speak to the safety, because I know, obviously, we hear about different systems being hijacked by intruders and ransomware, things of that sort. Can you speak to the safety of the cloud-based system that we're talking about going to?
Councilmember, I apologize. You asked this question at the last meeting, and I had Jeff Massey provide me with information on the city's cybersecurity. I believe that Mr. Massey is in the building, and he would be best qualified to provide you with the information that you're looking for. I'm sorry.
What, you're not a cyber expert?
No. Well, what I can tell you while we're waiting for Jeff to arrive is, again, before the greater awareness of cybersecurity became prevalent within the municipal industry, Jeff Massey had been chomping at the bit to ensure that the city had those protections in place. So long before his home county in Indiana was subject to an attack, the city had protections in place on its servers to guarantee that Jeff would never have to talk to any of us about that. Good evening, Jeff. How are you?
Good evening. Good, good. Thank you.
Good evening, Jeff.
The question specifically about this system, Navaline, it's, I'm going to say, is best I can relatively immune to ransomware or that type of intrusion. The system it runs on, the S400 environment, does not, you know, lend itself to that type of intrusion. Beyond that, with moving it into the Central Square cloud gives us an additional layer of protection with their, you know, professional security environment that they host. Because they're hosting, I think at this point, over 100 of their clients in their cloud. So they have a very well-tuned security environment. On our own side, you know, our existing system is not accessible to the public, to the internet. It's, again, behind several different firewalls internally.
I knew you could answer that for me. Thank you.
Oh, this is Carol Rauschenberger?
Ms. Rauschenberger.
Yeah, I think I was the one that asked last week when we talked about new software for our water systems, because that was another area of cybersecurity, you know, problems in the recent past.
Let me apologize first to Councilmember Rauschenberger. And Jeff did provide an answer on that, and I failed to push that out to the council. Jeff, on the SCADA system? Thank you.
Okay, sure. Well, so overall, we have a fairly robust security environment. We have our own public-facing firewalls that secure all of our external connections for the city. So we have a pretty secure environment for managing incoming traffic and also our outgoing traffic. Then, in addition to the public-facing firewall, we have internal firewalls that segregate the SCADA network away from the entire city network. So we have internal firewalls separating the water system from the regular city data system. Then, in addition, we also run what's called Carbon Black. It's an endpoint protection suite from Dell. It's on every city device. And then, on top of Carbon Black, we also have a managed detection, live managed detection service from Dell, 24/7. They're monitoring our environment. They give us updates every week of kind of unusual traffic. If there's any suspicious traffic, they notify us immediately. You know, so I would get an alert, Mike Bear would get an alert, telling us that there's some kind of unusual traffic in our environment. And then, in addition, then we do a security review with a third-party expert vendor every two years. They come in, they do full pen testing on the external network and the internal network, review all of our security policies, suggest improvements and enhancements. You know, I'm sure everybody is still kind of, from our last round of password updates in February, March, is still kind of stinging a little bit with the 14-character password. That was one of the suggestions from our security audit last August, was we need to strengthen our passwords. Then, currently in progress, we just purchased VPN licensing that was approved by city council last month. We're in the process now of deploying that and getting that VPN across our entire network for all devices to encrypt all traffic. So this is just kind of a summary, then, very quickly of what our security posture looks like.
Thanks, Jeff.
Mr. Colesel.
And council members, if you look at your email, you will have the report that Mr. Massey prepared for this two weeks ago. I apologize. Thanks, Jeff.
Mr. Shaw?
Just curious, moving this to the cloud, how much additional work by your team is for the integrations? I'm assuming you have a ton of systems that connect, I'm sorry. So you're moving Navaline to the cloud.
Yes.
I'm assuming you have, like, many integration points with Navaline now that are still on-prem or maybe in other cloud services?
Yes.
Does this cover, like, the full effort to migrate Navaline to the cloud, plus kind of redoing all those integration points?
Yeah, so, yeah, when we move it to the cloud, we still have, you know, all of our internal integration points. We use, you know, without getting too technical, but what's called ODBC connections, we use a lot. That's just based on an internet address. So we will maintain that. Everything is going to be done through a secure, you know, secure socket connection between the city system and the cloud-based Navaline environment. And we're also trying to move, again, a lot of our things into a Russell API-type environment. So it is a little more secure and easier to manage.
Got you. Thank you, Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Jeff. Item G is amendment to the agreement.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0.
Now, item G, amendment to the existing agreement with consolidated consulting engineers for mechanical engineering services. Repairs or replacement of HVAC, electrical, and other related components is necessary to keep the equipment functioning properly. Request for proposal was initiated in 2021 based on a list of identified needs within the city buildings. In 2021, the city entered into an agreement with consolidated consulting engineers to provide mechanical and electrical engineering services for the various HVAC, electrical, and associated repair projects. This amendment to the agreement provides for work on additional projects being, and is being recommended for approval. Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved 9-0. Analysis from the council? Ms. Gillespie, analysis from staff.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone back. The City of Elgin is selling rain barrels thanks to a partnership with the Conservation Foundation and Upcycle Products, Inc. Residents can order a rain barrel and other garden accessories at cityofelgin.org/rainbarrel. If you order by May 4th, you can pick it up at Hawthorne Hill Nature Center on May 6th for pickup event, and begin collecting water in your garden. If you order past May 4th, there's still a delivery option with an additional fee. The Edward Shock Center of Elgin is turning 20 this November. While the Parks and Recreation Department has been around for quite some time, this year marks the 20th year of the Center of Elgin, a true gem to the city. It has provided the Parks and Rec Department with the venue to offer so many programs and events that enhance the quality of life and wellness in our community. In celebration, several special events and programs have been planned to help reintroduce the community to all the different divisions that truly make the Parks and Recreation Department the heart of our community. Just this week, all Elgin households will be receiving a postcard to share all the fun activities that are planned. Councilmembers, we have one at the dais for you. Learn more about all of these activities at cityofelgin.org/20years. Thank you.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Been moved and second to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene at the regular council meeting at 7:15.
Hey, fifty years flew by, huh?
I have with me the board president, Sergio Rodriguez.
Mr. Sergio.
And board secretary.
Whereas Centro de Informacion was established in March 1972, when there was an estimated 5,000 Latinos in the Elgin area in order to offer information, referrals, and advocacy in celebrating its 50th anniversary. And whereas the mission of Centro de Informacion is to power Hispanics with the ability to effectively integrate into the greater community through the facilitation of information, education, citizenship, and well-being. And whereas Centro helps more than 15,000 predominantly low-income Hispanic immigrants each year by providing counseling, bilingual advocacy, information and referral, immigration and naturalization services, parenting skills training, and community education. And whereas Centro has served people from not only the 16 Latin American countries, but has served more than 50 other countries in the world through immigration and naturalization counseling. And whereas one of Centro's founding members, Jaime Garcia, has been with the organization in almost every capacity since 1972, including the last 15 years as executive director, and is retiring, and joins Centro in celebrating its 50th anniversary. Now, therefore, I David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, Illinois, do hereby commend Centro de Informacion and recognize them for 50 years of service, their valuable contributions to Elgin and the Hispanic community, and congratulate Executive Director Jaime Garcia on his retirement. And we're going to miss this man.
Keep swimming, buddy.
Thank you very much. I have with me our Board President Sergio Rodriguez and Board Secretary. I have a problem with names, even people I love very much. Patty Arroyo, I'm sorry. And it's really an honor that we are celebrating our 50th anniversary. And we have, Centro is a mainstay here in the community and will continue as long as the services are needed. And we are very proud to be part of Elgin. Elgin has a proud history of working with all and a very welcoming community. And I want to thank the mayor and the city council for your support and participation in Centro de Informacion. Thank you very much.
Amber Peters. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Whereas the Early Childhood Collaboration, Elgin Partnership for Early Learning, also known as EPEL, and other community organizations that serve the 9,000 children ages five and under and their families in Elgin in conjunction with the National Association for Education of Young Children are celebrating the Week of the Young Child. And whereas these organizations are working to improve equitable learning opportunities in the first 2,000 days of a child's life, which is a critical time when 90% of brain growth occurs in young children. And whereas babies and young children have profound impacts on serving a strong and vibrant community. And whereas the public policies that supports early learning for all young children are crucial to the future of Elgin's young children, families, and the community as a whole. And whereas it is our collective responsibility to recommit ourselves to ensuring that each and every child experiences the type of early environment at home, at childcare, at school, and in the community that will promote their early learning. Now, therefore, I David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 2nd to April 8th, 2022, as the Week of the Young Child in Elgin, and encourage all residents to celebrate, support, and duly note this occasion in our community. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's hard to follow, Jaime. After all those years, we appreciate all you've done. So, thank you so much for having me tonight to represent the young children and the families, early care educators, and the early care system in our community. As noted in the proclamation, the first five years of life is very critical to the future success of our children and our families. The brain is the only organ in the body that when a child is born, it's not fully developed. And how it's fully developed is when we engage our children. And that means that we're all the builders. Our communities, the builders, the educators, the builders, the families are the builders. The Week of the Young Child is a time to celebrate our young families and recommit our energy to this childcare crisis that we have going on right now. We can't get our families back to work if we don't have childcare centers that are open. We have many classrooms that are closed because of their wages, as I was just talking to Councilman Stefan. Before this, I said we have about 3,000 children that are in this community, based on the federal poverty level, that qualify for free state and federal programs. And we also have educators in this community that their children also qualify for those federal programs because they have very low wages for what they make. So, a lot of them are leaving, and they're going other places because we know that childcare is a very, it's a hard job. Our best investment are the children of our community. And we have to really, we're going to have to get behind it if we're going to change that. Before COVID, the percentage of children coming into kindergarten was about 15% of children were considered kindergarten-ready. And now, that number is much lower. So, it's time for us as a community to make this a choice and to come together, figure out what we're going to do. EPEL works with a collective impact model where we take whatever our problem is, and we all come together, and we come up with solutions. So, we need a lot of out-of-the-box thinking and welcome any conversations that are around that. We want Elgin to be a place of choice that if somebody's coming to Illinois, like when I moved to Illinois 15 years ago, and they said, "Where do you want to live?" We want people to say, "We want them to come to Elgin because this is a great place to raise a family, and we all know that." And so, we also want those supports in place for these families. Week of the Young Child is just a time to engage families. There's lots of community partners that are going to do activities. For example, Kerry Reynolds at the center. They're going to have story walks inside. During the week, Mama Lee's Popcorn's going to do a storytime. They have a swim tot time. The library is going to have bilingual storytime. Elgin Public Museum has a program going on. Elgin Police Department has an Easter egg hunt that they already have like 500 people signed up for. So, I hope there's going to be a lot of people boiling eggs for that. And we're just so proud of this community because you all love children so big. But it's going to take all of us to, you know, really get after this. We don't want to ride the wave of early childhood and early learning. We want to be the wave. So, let's all come together, really make a big investment in these next years. If you read the news, which you all do, you know that a lot of investment's being made right now for early childhood because we know that that's, that learning starts at birth. When you come in downstairs, it says, "First 2,000 days." Those first 2,000 days are so important because that's what we've got to really engage that brain to be ready. So, I hope that you'll start seeing these signs around town and on social media. Families can go to our website. It has all the activities that are going on in Elgin, South Elgin, Bartlett, Hanover Park, Streamwood. They also can scan the QR code, which will also open up. Most of the, most, all the events are free. There's a couple that costs a little something, but not very much. There's even a sensory yoga time for families with children with different needs. So, we appreciate you being a part in reading the Early Childhood Proclamation and being strong advocates in the community.
Thank you.
Brings us to a portion of the meeting where we recognize public comments from persons present, and we have one person signed up this evening, Mike Montgomery.
Well, I happen to be Mike Warren, and I could talk about our police department for two hours, but we only have two minutes. And in February, Food for Greater Elgin tried an experimental fundraising strategy to raise what we hoped would be $10,000 for culturally appropriate foods for our clients. It was a virtual food drive that we called Flavors from Home that will help us stock foods that people long for. Shout out to the Elgin Police Department and...
Community Relations Stafford Maria Barrero, Officer Shelley Mendiola, Sergeant Heather Lenciani, Detective Carla Carter, Katie Johnston, Lacey Roberts in administration, and of course, Chief Anna Lally, who all pitched in together to organize their response and did the heavy lifting for this project.
For leading the way to helping us raise more than $20,000, we're delighted with our success and proud that it was Elgin's Police Department that led the way to adding a bit of dignity to the lives of our neighbors. So, thank you, Elgin Police Department.
Thank you. We appreciate you greatly. And while we've got the floor, of course, you know, we will do what we need to do. Just to give you an update on what's happening with us since we were last here, which is that the numbers of people coming to us for food have just exploded. We're having seen 30% more people coming through our doors every week than we saw a year before. People are coming here because of inflation. Cost of food is dramatically higher. People are especially searching for meat and produce. People are coming here because Elgin is a port of entry for people who are immigrants. And we see a lot of people from Venezuela who have political asylum here. They have better documents than many of us have for being here, but they're not allowed to work. And you have to have food, and so, they're coming to us. It's overwhelming at times. We appreciate your support, and we'll keep having at it. Thank you for all that you've done for us.
Thank you for what you do. Brings us to bid. The first item is bid number 22-006, Right-of-Way Mowing.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we award this bid to McGinty Brothers in the amount of $34,950.
Second? Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Bruce Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Item two is bid number 22-007, Festival Park Concrete Slab.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we award the contract to Copenhever Construction in the amount of $58,750.
Second?
Been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Powell?
Yes, thank you. Since we just had a very robust discussion around special events, I was excited to see this on the agenda. A question I have for staff is, what is the anticipated timetable that we anticipate the pad will be ready to be used?
Greg Hulkey will come out, and he'll be able to tell you.
And while Greg is coming, just putting in a shout for the Cultural Arts Commission to be able to, like, put some murals on it. It's just artwork. We want to paint on it.
We've got to get Amanda back first. Thanks, Greg.
Good evening, Council. How are you tonight?
Hi, Greg.
I actually had a conversation with the, with Copenhever just the other day, and they said as soon as things, they can pour concrete without having to do any freeze protection, and they're ready to go. So, late April, hopefully.
So, it'll be in place for whatever we want to do, hopefully?
I'm not sure how long it has to cure, but, you know, I would think by June, we'd be good to go.
That's what I'm aiming for. Thank you.
No problem.
Thanks, Greg. Anything else?
Oh, one other quick add-on to that. Didn't look at my notes. Based on where this is going in Festival Park, is it going to be a problem if we someday decide that we want to put the ice rink down there or a ice rink down there?
No, I've, when we, when we were looking at ice rinks two, three years ago, whatever it was, and we were looking at all the glyce stuff, we had actually got some proposals from the company that does glyce for, you know, for something sized like that. A traditional ice rink where we're doing refrigerant and whatnot, that's a completely different, completely different animal. But if we were doing glyce, it's already been talked about. It's stuff that we can figure out in the process.
So, it would not impede us from doing that?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Dixon?
Yep. Quick follow-up question. Don't go too far, man. You thought you got away from me.
Hey. Always happy to have fun.
No, a quick question. Will that concrete slab, could it also serve as a stage area? So, I know it's just to get things on and off of the ramp for when there's a larger concert going on, but can that area also be utilized as a stage? Because it double as it.
I think you could use it for anything you really want, too. So, I mean, if you, I mean, it's being designed, and the reason it's being put is there so we can trailer, put a trailer stage on there. If we wanted to do a built stage, you know, that would be something with some risers and whatnot. I'm sure that's more than capable. I mean, it's just a, should just be a giant level, mostly level space, should be sloped off to one side a little bit to, you know, to aid for water runoff. But, yeah, it should be fine.
Okay. All right. So, it'll be open to the public if they want to rent out the park?
Oh, sure. It's part of every, yeah. I mean, if, yeah, if a group wanted to rent the, rent the park for some, you know, any other festival or event they wanted to do it on, and they wanted to put something down there, by all means.
Perfect. Yep. Thank you.
Sure. I'm going to stay this time.
Anything else? Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Item three is bid number 22-008, Golf Course Robotic Range Picker.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we award the contract to Automated Outdoor Solutions from Woodstock in the amount of $26,340.
Second?
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 9-0. Item four is bid number 22-014, 2022 Pool Chemicals.
Mayor made the motion to award the bid to the two lowest responsible bidders in the amount of $36,419.
Second?
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved 9-0. Item five is a South Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative for Security Cameras.
Yes, Mayor Captain, I make a motion that we purchase cameras in the amount of $31,228 from Stanley Convergent Security Solutions.
Second?
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved 9-0. Brings us to other business. First item is a resolution accepting a grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority's Strong Communities Program.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve the resolution accepting the Strong Communities Award and moving the money over.
Second?
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Ms. Powell?
For the public that may be wondering what this is, can the manager just kind of succinctly talk about what this entails?
Succinctly? This is a program that enables the city to demolish blighted abandoned residential properties. We originally applied for and received approval under a previous program. That program was discontinued and transferred to this initiative. And so, this is just the formality for the city to continue being able to tap into those resources to take care of those problemed properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved 9-0. Item two is a resolution authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Inquest Consulting LLC for diversity, equity, and inclusion consulting services.
Move for approval?
Second?
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor Captain?
Ms. Powell?
I know one of the items that some of us are anxiously awaiting that Inquest will be working on is helping us to fill the DEI position that was created in our budget probably about a year ago. So, I just want to move that up the priority list that we can have them get working on that as soon as possible so that we can get someone in that position.
Anything else? Okay, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 8-1. Item three is an ordinance approving an amended design guideline review manual, a guideline manual for landmarks and historic districts amending Title 20 of the Elgin Municipal Code 1976 as amended entitled Historic Preservation.
Move for approval?
Second?
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, Ms. Martinez?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I think that this is important to update and amend. This document was created in 1997, and it was amended in 2008. And now, it's being amended again. And the reason why is because of, one of the reasons is solar. You know, obviously, in 1997, we weren't talking about solar as much as we are now. And also, it's been amended to accommodate mid-century modern buildings to, so people can understand and to understand the application that you have to fill out to understand why you're doing it. I think a lot of it has to do with education. And this is one of the main reasons why I brought up that it's time that we also look into our districts. And I pointed out the Elgin National Watch Historic District. And I just want to make it known, I'm not against history. I'm not against our districts. I'm just saying, let's just talk about it, okay? This district was brought in, and it was designated in 1997, the same year that this document of the Elgin Designing Guideline Manual for Landmarks. And just like we're amending this guideline, we should look at our districts, you know, because this district, more than any that I know, it's a very unique district. I feel, I read where there was six homes that were estimated to be the worth of $30,000 to $293,000. It's a very unique district. We have to understand that, yes, we do have grants, and grants are good, but they really don't help for regular maintenance. And all I want to do is to try to find out why this district, out of all of them, is not as active. And just by bringing this up and it being in the newspaper, you know, people have actually sat down with me or trying to get ideas. That's what we're trying to do, you know? I see a lot of homes on the west side that are beautiful, that are homes that would definitely qualify, but we have to educate people on, you know, if you wanted to, if you want to restore it, how we can help you, what we can do. We have what I call is tools there to help people. But what happens is people don't know about it. And this is what I mean. We need to talk about it so that people are aware of it. I also would like to say that this specific area is not of architectural worth like it is in other areas. Now, I understand, like the Elgin Planetarian, that's something that is a landmark. I understand, like the Fire Bar Number Five, you know? People don't know that that's our third museum we have in the city. We have a little depot. I get it, you know? And this is a good time, because this is a good time to promote the facts, you know? Right now, the city has more than 1,700 parcels located within the historical district, and 22 of them are landmarks. People don't know that information. I think it's something that, and to make this more into perspective, this is in a city that consists of 35,200 homes, you know? So, all I was asking is that, you know, let's talk about it. On the contrary, I've always supported many things that the historical district have, have brought up to us. So, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Thor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everybody, I think everybody knows how much I'm into preservation, but I, something came to mind at the last meeting, and of course, obviously, there's a lot of, my preservation friends are here, because of the article in the paper, kind of took the conversation out of context that that's what we were talking about, but we really weren't. That really wasn't the issue. We were complimenting and moving forward with all the work that Kristen and her team had done on amending the guidelines, which I again commend her on. But there was something brought up that comes to mind, and I wonder if we can't think about it and maybe have the preservationists and, and Kristen think about, that some people that buy historic homes find out after they bought it their restrictions. And the realtors want to make a sale, and it's, I know firsthand someone that did that. They found out afterwards some of the restrictions that they're under. And while I believe in preservation, I do think that that should be covered in a better manner, and I just don't know how that could be achieved. I wonder if I can't put that out there to all of you out there listening to maybe see if there isn't something that you could come up with that would help in that respect. I mean, it could only help the districts be stronger, and you wouldn't end up with a person complaining that doesn't want to comply because they, quote, "didn't know what they were getting into." So, it's just a thought, something to see if it can't be added into. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Ms. Powell?
Just a, a quick question for staff, and I know that when you buy a house, you get a whole slew of material at closing. It's probably buried somewhere in that slew of material, but is it also included as part of the transfer stamp process?
The, the, we discussed this briefly at the last meeting. The ordinances creating the historic districts are recorded, so when title, the title commitment, the title search is done for the conveyance, it shows up as a, an item affecting the property. I do not believe the city, and I don't handle the transfer stamps, but I, I do not believe we have an extra notification in the transfer stamp process.
That'd be the, in my mind, that'd be the easiest way, but I, because I know that, you mentioned, it's, it's, it comes up as part of the title, but you get so much stuff at closing, most people don't look at that stuff. But that is why you have a good attorney, hopefully, at closing.
I believe that we looked into, into providing information with the transfer stamps at one point, but just so you know that, too, there's nothing that guarantees that when the person who picks up the transfer stamps will actually convey that information to the lawyer or the person who's purchasing the property. Sometimes it's a lawyer picking it up, sometimes it's the realtor, so we can only go that far in terms of guaranteeing that the property owners actually have that. But we'll take a look back into that, as Councilmember Thor has suggested, because it certainly isn't a problem creating documentation that can go in those areas. But I, I have a recollection of doing something like that in the past, and I'm not sure whether we're still continuing to do it or whether, or why it may not have been that successful, other than the fact that there's no guarantee it's actually going to get under the nose of the buyers.
Right. I just think, you know, just based on the conversation that we had and based on the feedback we've had from the public, I, I think it's important that we do our due diligence to make sure that when people buy these properties, that they're aware that they are buying a, a home in a historic district and that they make the appropriate decision on whether or not that makes sense for them and their families, rather than finding out after the fact. So, you can't make people read stuff, but I, I think if, if we, you know, do our part to help educate folks in, in that process, and we, even working with the realtors, I'm sure there are plenty of folks in the audience that would love to, to, to work with some of our local realtors to make sure that they are passing that information on a little bit more diligently as well.
We can ask staff to come back in a couple of months with some suggestions for us?
Yeah, yes, Mayor. And, and it occurred to me, too, really, conveying information at the time the transfer stamps are issued is probably a little bit too late in the process, because by then the mortgage has typically been approved, and the likelihood of somebody backing away because they learn about that at the end. So, we'll, we'll go back to work, and we'll see what we can do in advance of that, so very early in the process, before that commitment comes, people know that, that they're purchasing a property in a historic district.
Right. And that's why I mentioned the, the realtors, too. They need to be a little bit more diligent on conveying that information. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Thor?
Thank you. Just one last thing. There's someone in the audience that I'd like to acknowledge. While there are many people out there tonight from the Historical Society, preservationists, and people that care so much, there's an individual that we're so glad to see here tonight because of what he's gone through in the last year, and that's Mr. Dan Miller. He's done so much for so many homes, so much preservation work, and so much always as a volunteer. And with that sad accident that you had last year, it's a welcome sight to see you back on your feet.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 8-1. Item four is a resolution authorizing execution of a successor collective bargaining agreement with Local Number 439 International Association of Firefighters.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Powell?
A quick kudos to our staff, and in particular, Chief Sagan, for the work he's done, our legal department, our HR department. We, we got this done pretty quickly, and it, it's been, obviously, the last few years with the pandemic have been especially hard on our first responders, our, our firefighters, our paramedics, our, our police officers. So, just want to acknowledge all of their work over the past few years, getting us through this pandemic. They are, you know, our first line, our essential workers, and it's, it's good to see that we're moving forward with this collective bargaining agreement much quicker than we have in the past. Thank you.
Anything else? Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 9-0. Brings us, item five is a resolution appointing members to the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners. This item must be removed from the table. Move to remove it from the table?
Second.
It's been moved in a second to remove from the table. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the item's removed from the table. Now, it's a, a discussion of the resolution appointing members to the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners. Move for approval?
Mayor Captain?
Second.
Mayor Captain?
It's been moved in second for approval.
Mayor Captain, I would ask that we allow, that we separate these so we can vote on them separately, make a motion to vote on these separately.
Second. We have a motion on the floor.
This would be, this would be considered a motion to amend, so it would be in order to amend, to move it separately, but it calls, requires a separate roll call vote first to see if it, that the motion to amend would pass.
Okay, it calls for a motion to amend, to separate these items. Clerk, please call a roll. Ms. Powell, you made a motion. Ms. Powell, a motion to amend has to be second.
This motion, the roll call on this is Councilwoman Powell's motion to separate the two out into separate votes. That's what this roll call is on.
Here, she needs a second.
Councilmember Dixon made a...
Okay.
Okay.
It's been moved in second to amend. Just do us.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Roche-Burger?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 8-1.
So, then the first consideration would be the first name in the, the motion is still valid, but is into separate votes, so the first vote would be in the first person named in the resolution, the consideration for appointment.
And that would be the appointment of Jody Perkins. Move for approval?